Call to order, the January 3rd, 2022 reorganization meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Upper Chichester Township. Please stand and salute the flag for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag.
To the flag. To the Pledge of Allegiance.
This meeting is in compliance with the First Class Township Code and has been duly advertised as required by law. We'll move on to the swearing in of our elected officials. We have the Magistrate District Judge David Griffin here tonight to conduct the swearing in of three re-elected officials tonight. Board members Nicole Whitaker and Joseph Neary and our tax collector Daniels Incezum. Judge Griffin, please.
Can you move so we can see you in the camera?
Yeah.
I can't see you guys.
Hi, your name is Joseph Neary. I'll solemnly swear.
Thank you.
I will do my duty. As Township Commissioner. I am. Upper Chichester Township. With the integrity of my heart.
Commissioner Whitaker.
Okay.
Good afternoon, may.
Alright. I.
Your name?
Nicole Whitaker.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Will support, obey, and defend.
I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
I will discharge my duties.
I will discharge my duties.
Township Commissioner.
As Township Commissioner.
Fidelity.
With fidelity.
Integrity.
Integrity.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And tax collector Daniels Incezum. Thank you very much, Your Honor. Prior to the meeting, all three elected officials presented their certificates of election and affidavits of residency requirements to the Township Secretary. Congratulations on your appointment, uh, you're taking your office. Uh, next, we will move to the organization of the Board of Commissioners. And I would ask for there to be a nomination for the temp- position of temporary chairperson.
Nominate George Needles to temporarily be our chairperson.
Were there any other nominations? Any other nominations from the floor? Uh, at this point, I see no other nominations, so I'll ask for a motion to close the nominations.
Second.
We have a motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, thank you for your vote of confidence. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. I will act as the temporary president. The first order of business we will have will be the election of the President of the Board of Commissioners. I will now entertain nominations.
I nominate Edward Rakowski for Board President.
Second.
Do we have any other nominations from the floor? Any other nominations for the position of President? Ayes.
Yeah, I don't, I believe nobody else has a position of President.
I see, uh, no other nominations, have a motion to close the nominations for President. Okay. Great, perfect. So I'd ask for a motion to appoint Edward Rakowski as President of the Board of Commissioners. Okay, so you, okay. Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, the ayes have it. I appreciate all that, President of Board of Commissioners, if you'd come and take the chair, please. Very good, the meeting's yours.
I still got a lot more to talk about, thank you.
Commissioner Vayaco, I'm not taking your seat, I'm just spreading out for tonight.
I, I can't see, the only thing I could see is it.
Okay.
You have to change up your, um, settings, you can see the whole room.
Yeah. I don't wanna, I don't wanna lose it.
Okay.
Okay, I wanna thank everybody for the confidence of becoming Board President here. Um, I'll make my comments later on this evening underneath the comments. Uh, I do wanna thank Mike Guardiola as a past President. We have this board, like I said, I'm to comment, I wanna go a little further later on tonight to move on with the elections. So, I'd like to open up the nominations for Vice President. I nominate Nicole Whitaker.
Second.
Any other nominations? Move for the election. Need a motion on the floor to accept the nomination for Vice President Nicole Whitaker? Right, yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. Okay, um, looks like we're, or have any remarks from the Commissioners? Uh, I will start with the Vice President Nicole Whitaker, if you have any remarks.
Um, thank you, thank you everyone, um, to the board for their vote of confidence for myself and Ed. Um, I just, I would like to, um, also thank our Solicitor and Engineer, our Township Manager. Um, we've, well, most of us, the board's been together for the past 10 years. Uh, we've worked well together, um, through our ups and downs, but overall, we've done good, I believe, on behalf of the residents of the township. Um, starting my fourth term as Commissioner, I'm looking forward to continuing to serve the residents of the Second Ward. And, um, I'm just looking forward to, to, uh, moving forward with, with, uh, with, with the board, so thank you again.
Thank you. I'm gonna change things up a little bit, I know we started from my left to the right. Uh, as President, I'm gonna go from my right to my, uh, left with my, my remarks being last, uh, we'll go with Commissioner Joe Neary.
Thank you, I'd just like to, uh, thank everyone in the audience for their support, I'd like to thank the residents of the Fourth Ward for the opportunity to continue to serve, uh, for my fifth and final term, and I appreciate everybody's consideration, thank you.
Commissioner Michael Guardiola.
Thank you, um, as Ed said, I served as Chairman for the, for the past eight years, and I just wanna thank the board for that opportunity. Um, that's, um, longevity in this, in this time and age, so, um, again, I'd like to thank the board for their past support. Uh, to Commissioner Rakowski, I wish you the best, I hope we can, uh, move forward and work together well for the betterment of the township. Commissioner Whitaker, congratulations, I'm hoping that we can move forward and work well together also. And, uh, with that said, I'm hoping for a, um, the best in 2022, so, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Joe Vayaco.
Thank you, um, congratulations, Ed Nicole, and, uh, like most of us said, we've been together 10 years, and I think we'll just keep moving forward in the right direction.
Thank you, um, my same sentiments on that, um, like everybody's here, I mean, we, we've had our differences, but we got over them. Uh, I, I'm proud to say, we've been on the board for 10 years, Mike and I, I know Joe and Joe and Nicole have been here a while, 12 years, they were just presented with the plaque, Joe, this is his first term, but, uh, it's an honor to be able to sit up here to say we haven't raised taxes in for the last 12 years, maybe longer, with some of the other board members. Uh, I think we find ways to do what's right for the, for the residents, and that's what it's all about, and, uh, somehow, we end up doing it. The budget looks blowing out away in June, but by November, we're on the same page for the same people, and, and we do the uh, same services for the same money, and I think they do a hell of a job, our Police Department, the Highway Department, uh, the Fire Department, everybody that's up here to office. Uh, I don't wanna miss everybody, we have so many entities, the library, the, uh, Silver Authority, so, it's all one big happy family. So, but, congratulations, everybody, and as everybody stated, I echo the same thing, I think we're in the right direction. We have many a projects that this board has started, and we wanna see through, and that's our goal, so. We'll move on with our meeting, we're opening it up to, uh, citizens' comments, or, uh, if anybody towards my right, but the left of the room have anything for the comments for the reorganization meeting tonight. Anybody to the right side, my left, have any comments for citizens' comment for this reorganization? Make note, there's no comments from citizens, we'll move along with our appointments, uh, and the resolutions. As we all know, we are going, uh, virtual again, uh, so I do have to get citizens' comments due to the recent surge of COVID-19. During, uh, Section 5 Citizens' Comments, uh, open the floor to the com- we'd like to make a public comment, you could do so by dialing 571-748-4021, and entering the passcode 604069932Pound. Our number again is 571-748-4021, the passcode is 604069932Pound. Follow the prompts, uh, mute and unmute in your phone, and we will hold, uh, please, when you do make your comment, state your full name and address for the permanent, permanent public record, thank you, we'll hold for two minutes. Let the record show, there's no public comment, uh, through the phone lines, we'll move on with our regular, uh, nominations, so appointments. Uh, we'll move down to the nomination for the Township Manager.
Second.
Is there any other nominations?
So I didn't hear the nominations, can you all please speak into the microphone?
Nominate George Needles.
Michael second. My second.
Thank you.
Can you hear us now, Nicole?
Yep, mhm.
Is there any more nominations for the Township Manager? If not, we'll have a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. Georgia Needles, Township Manager. Open up nominations for the Township Secretary.
I nominate George Needles, second.
Are there any other nominations? All in favor for the Township Secretary nomination, George Needles?
Aye.
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 Opposed? So ordered. Open up the nomination for Township Treasurer.
I nominate George Needles, second.
Any other nominations? Call for a vote for the nomination for the Township Treasurer, George Needles.
Aye.
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 Opposed? So ordered. Open up the nominations for Township Right-to-Know Officer.
George Needles, I nominate George Needles, second.
Any other nominations? Move to vote for the Township Right-to-Know Officer, George Needles.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. Open up the nomination to delegate to the Delaware County Tax Collection Committee.
I nominate George Needles, second.
Any other nominations? All in favor of George Needles as a Delaware County Tax Collector Co- Collection Committee?
Aye.
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 Opposed? So ordered. Nominations for the Delegate to the Delaware County Consortium of Governments.
I nominate George Needles, second.
Any other nominations? Call for a vote for the Delaware County Consortium of Governments, George Needles.
Aye.
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 Opposed? So ordered. Open the nominations of the Delegate to the Delaware County Coastal Zone Task Force.
I nominate George Needles, second.
Any other nominations? Call for a vote for the Delaware County Coastal Zone Task Force, nominate George Needles.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. Open up the nominations for the alternate delegate to the Delaware County Tax Collection Committee. Nominate Joe Neary.
I was gonna say, I nominate Joe Neary.
Second.
Any other nominations? Move for a vote for the alternate Delaware County, alternate delegate to the Delaware County Tax Collection Committee, Joe Neary.
Aye.
Aye.
Open up the nominations for the alternate delegate to the Delaware County Consortium of Governments.
I nominate Nicole Whitaker, second.
Any other nominations? Move the vote for the alternate delegate to the Delaware County Consortium of the Governments, Nicole Whitaker.
Aye.
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 Opposed? So ordered. Open up the nomination for the alternate deleg- delegate to the Delaware County Coastal Zone Task Force.
I nominate Nicole Whitaker, second.
Any other nominations? Move the vote for the alternate delegate to the Delaware County Coastal Zone Task Force, Nicole Whitaker.
Aye.
Aye.
So ordered. Open the nominations for the Township Solicitor.
Nominate, I nominate Michael Pierce.
Any other nominations? Move, move to, move to vote for the Township Solicitor, Michael Pierce.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Open up the nominations for the alternate Township Solicitor.
I'd like to nominate Beth Norton Beck as alternate Township Solicitor.
Second.
Any other nominations? Move the vote for the alternate Township Solicitor, Beth Norton Beck. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. Open up the nominations for the Township Engineer.
Catania Engineering, second.
Any other nominations for the Township Engineer? Move the vote for the nominee of the Township Engineer, Lisa Catania Engineering.
Aye.
Aye.
No. Make, make record, there's one no and four yes. Uh, open up the nominations for the alternate Township Engineer.
Nominate Kellyn Close.
Second. And, any other nominations? I move, I move to, for the vote for the alternate Township Engineer, Kellyn Close. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Open up the nomination for the Township Auditor.
Nominate Lightson Economies.
Second.
Any other nominees? Move the vote on the nomination of the Township Auditor, Lightson Economists.
Aye.
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 Open up the nominations for the Township Building Code Official.
Nominate Charles Catania, second.
Any other nominees? Now, is that Charles Catania and the Catania Engineering firm, or is it just Charles Catania himself?
I would ask our Solicitor if we need to appoint the firm or the individual. Yeah, he owns the B C.
Any other nominees? I move, move for a vote for the Township Building Code Official, uh, Charles Catania.
Aye.
Aye.
Open up the nominations for the Township Flood Plane Administrator.
Skip one.
We, the number 17.
Number 17.
Yeah, we, we overlooked that one.
Uh, I don't have.
Just Sewer, Sewerage Enforcement Officer.
Alrighty, I thought this wasn't really so many. Time out. Number 17 I have is Yeah, was that? Yeah, I got it right here, let me get to the right one. Eleven. Okay, there it is. My apologies. Three different lists. Uh, open up the nomination for the Township Sewerage Enforcement Officer.
I nominate Mike Siakko, second.
Any other nominees? Move for a motion for the nominee for the Township Sewerage Enforcement Officer, Mike Siakko.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. Okay, uh, open up the nominations for the Township Flood Plane Administrator.
I nominate Lisa Catania.
Second.
Second.
Any, any other nominees? Close the nomination, um, close. Call for a vote for the nominee of the Township Flood Plane Administrator, Lisa Catania.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. Open up the nominations for the Township Code Enforcer, Officer.
Nominate Keith Crowley.
Second. Any other nominations? Move the vote for the nominee of the Township Code Enforcement Officer, Keith Crowley, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. Open up the nominees for the Township Housing Officer. Nominate Charles Romali.
Second.
Any other nominees? Move, move the vote for the Township Zoning Officer or Township Housing Officer.
Aye.
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 Aye. Open up the nominations for the Township Zoning Officer.
Charles Romali.
Second. Any other nominees? Move for the, for the, uh, vote for the nominee of Township Zoning Officer, Charles Romali.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Move to open up the nominees for Assistant Health Officer.
Del Finelli.
Second. Any other nominees? Move the vote for the nominee for the Assistant Health Officer, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. Open up the nominee for the Township Land, Township Land Planner, I nominate Brian Sedell.
Second.
Any other nominees? I move to open up the vote, uh, goodness gracious, getting tongue tied now here. Move for a motion to accept the nominee for the Township Land Planner, Brian Sedell.
Aye.
Aye.
Open up the nominees for the Township Director of Parks and Recreation.
I nominate Brian Warren.
Second.
Any other nominees? Move to vote for the nominee for the Township Directors of Parks and Recreation, Bri- uh, Brian Warren.
Aye.
Aye.
Open up the nominees for the Township Director of Police and Emergency Services Administration.
I nominate Ray Fuller.
Second.
Any other nominees? I'm, I move to vote for the, the nominee of the Township Director of Police and Emergency Services Administration, Ray Fuller. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. Open up the nominee for the interim Deputy Fire Marshal, uh, my fault, interim Fire Marshal. I nominate, excuse me, Craig Small.
Second. Second.
Any other nominees? Move the vote on the nominee of interim Fire Marshal Craig Small. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. I need to, I'd like to table to twenty-seven and twenty-eight because we have to have a meeting with the, uh, Fire Department. Because, uh, due to their election and our... I know we talked about it for the Township Fire Chief because we don't have any answers yet, but the Fire Marshal also, I've got a couple of questions that are in concern for the, just the deputy fire marshal. And hopefully we could resolve this within, within the week. If, if not by February's meeting, or the thirteenth. I move the table to, uh, the next two, do I have to do both in another individual? Number twenty-seven for the interim Deputy Fire Marshal, I'd like to table and also the, uh, township Fire Chief.
We have time at this time, or?
Once we have a second, I guess, yeah.
Are they all good with it?
We need a sec-
I'll second for discussion. Okay. So, um, I'm, I'm okay with Ray Fuller as our interim Deputy Fire Marshal, and I believe John Thornton for our Township Fire Chief. So if the board wishes to table it, I'm, um, that's the will of the board, but as far as I'm concerned, I, I would be fine with moving on with tonight.
When there any reason is, um... We, we have an ordinance in there for the Township Fire Chief. And through the history of the Township Fire Chief, they rotate it. So they just had their elections, we have not met with them to find out who's who and where placed. It's up to the Board of Commissioners to appoint. The ordinance also reads that we could appoint any other individual, does not have to be the Fire Chief of any fire company. I'm not going in that direction, I'm just asking to sit down and meet with them so we can find out what their election was, who the last Fire Chief for the township was. And I don't want egg in our face again, being a, as our ordinance reads, the Township Fire Chief must be in the, live into the, in the township. And the last two have not. So I just want to be upfront, this has nothing to do with, we're not working with the Fire Department. We just need to communicate since they just had their election as one company. Because I'm requesting a meeting is what we're doing. That's, and we're just tabling our decision on the Fire Marshal and the, uh... That's not what, that's not what's said.
Excuse me, Jim, for one second, could you identify yourself for the record so if you have a record when you speak?
And, and...
I can't hear the-
Put on the microphone because we cannot hear.
Jim, we're gonna get your microphone so that way you can speak. Jim, would you mind coming up to the podium please, or?
I said we, we had our election two weeks ago. I mean, everybody in the township knows who the, who the chief is. The guy lives in the township, he worked for the township, but we don't want to put him in there because why?
Because I'm requesting a meeting.
What?
Because I'm requesting a meeting as cha- as chairperson of the Fire Department.
Requesting a meeting, does that, does that mean we gotta change our chief?
Who's talking?
Jim Smith. From Company Ten.
Relax.
Relax, okay.
Right.
So who is the Fire Chief, who was elected? Jim, who was elected?
John Thornton.
Who?
John Thornton.
John Thornton, okay.
I did, I just have-
We want to have a meeting with a guy that's elected.
Right. I just have some questions, I mean, you guys are on the defensive that were against any of this. We, when was the last, when's the last township chief this township had, was John Banner? Did we have one last year? Township chief that ran as a township chief for the township? He was the Fire Marshal.
He was the Fire Chief too. Frank was the Fire Chief there.
The Township Fire Chief, okay.
Who is the current, um, interim Deputy Mar- Fire Marshal?
Right.
We either need to vote on the motion to change, or, or the second could remove his second.
Who, who is the interim? De- deputy?
For, for the, uh, Fire Marshal or the Fire Chief?
Fire Marshal.
Uh, for the Fire Marshal was Ray Fuller.
Ray Fuller, okay, and then the Fire Chief is the one you said you wanted to meet about because you don't know, that's, okay. Gotcha, alright, so Ray Fuller. Okay, so are you amending your motion or what are you doing?
Well, it's up to, I mean, if somebody, I'm asking for a vote for the table, if they don't want to table it, then we...
Okay, so you don't have a second?
Yeah, we have a second, we have a second.
Well, let's take the vote then.
We take a vote whether or not to table it, so-
Correct.
Right.
Correct.
Table, and then no- Right.
What's up, Mike, I didn't hear you.
A yes vote would be to table twenty-seven and twenty-eight. A no vote would be to proceed with the nominations.
Correct. So, everybody has it?
Gotcha.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Why don't we, why don't we do a roll call vote?
Okay, George.
Easier.
Sure, Commissioner Baako?
Um, I'm fine with all three of them, Craig, Ray, and John.
So, that's not the motion.
The question is whether or not it's, it's a motion to table. A yes vote would be to table, a no vote would be to proceed with the nominations.
No.
Michael Gorioso?
No.
Joseph Neary?
No.
Edward Rakowski?
Yes.
Nicole Whitaker?
Yes.
Motion fails.
So we'll proceed with the, uh... Bar, uh, the... Twenty-seven to... Open up the nominations for the interim Deputy Fire Marshal.
I nominate Ray Fuller.
Second.
Any other nominees? Move, move the vote for the, uh, interim Deputy Fire Marshal.
Aye.
Aye.
Got three, uh, three yes.
Yes, I said yes.
Oh, okay, didn't hear it, okay. Move, move to, Jesus Christ, there it goes. There it goes, yeah, yeah, just crossed the wall. Move to open up the nomination for the Township Fire Chief.
Nominate John Thornton, second.
Any other nominees for the Fire Chief? Move, move the vote for the Township Fire Chief, John Thornton, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. Open up the nominations for the Emergency Management Coordinator.
Nominate Bill Rob- William Robinson.
Second it. Any other nominees? Move the vote for the Emergency Management Coordinator, William Robinson, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Move, move to open up the nominees for the Deputy Emergency Management Coordinator.
Nominate Carl Smith.
Second it. Any other nominees? Move for a vote for the Deputy Emergency Management Coordinator, Carl Smith, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So ordered. Open up the nominee, nominations for the Vacancy Bo- Board Position.
I nominate William Berlin.
I nominate Frank Sill.
Right, well-
We've got a nomination of William Berlin, is there a second?
We'll, we'll put it there, second it for him.
Please speak into the microphone, everybody.
And, and then-
There's a nomination on the floor for William Berlin as Vacancy Board Position.
And, and Mike-
Is there a second for that?
Yeah, I second it.
Seconded by Edward Kaus.
And then Mike? You nominated it?
Has a nomination.
Frank Sill.
Mike Gorioso nominates Frank Sill. Is there a second?
I second.
Seconded by Joe Baako. You would need a roll call vote, Mr. Chairman. To be clear, we, we vote by stating the name of the nominee that you can go for. That would be correct, when you vote, you state the name of the nominee that you want. Joseph Baako?
Frank Sill.
Michael Gorioso?
Frank Sill.
Joseph Neary?
William Berlin.
Edward Rakowski?
Frank Sill.
Nicole Whitaker?
Bill Berlin.
Frank Sill has three.
Open up the nominees for appointment of the Board of Health Member, uh, hold on, let me go back up. Yeah, just get to it, sorry. Open up the nominations for the appointment for the Plan and Commission Representing the Fourth Ward.
Nominate Cindy Charny.
Second.
Do you want to nominate Frank Sill?
No, that is not-
Well, good. Any other nominees? Move the vote for the appointment of the Plan and Commission Representing the Fourth Ward, Cindy, Cindy Charny.
Aye.
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 Open up the nominations for the appointment of the Board of Health Member of the Third Ward.
Brian Batchor.
Can you repeat that?
Yeah, where was it?
Brian Batchor.
On your old list is number thirty-one.
Okay, I got it, yes, okay, that's fine. Second it. Are there any other nominees? Move to, for the appointment of the Board of Health Member, Third Ward, Brian Batchor. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Open up the nominees, nominations for the Appointment of Recreation Board Member, Third Ward.
Liz Franz.
Second.
Commissioner Neary seconded.
Any other, any, any other nominees? Moved for the Appointment of Recreation Board Member, Third Ward, Liz France, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'd like to motion to table the appointment to the Southern Delaware County Authority.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Tabled. Move to open up the nominations for the, uh, Appointment of the Zoning Hearing Board Member, Fifth Ward.
I'd like to nominate John McCrony.
Second.
Any other nominees? Move to, move the vote for the Appointment of the Zoning Hearing Board Member, the Fifth Ward, John McCrony. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. Open up the nominations for the Appointment of the Zoning, God, next one, that's my piece, already did that. Move to open up the Appointment for the Pension Actuary Consultant.
Nominate Thomas Anderson Company.
Second it. Any other nominees? Move to appoint Pension Actuary Consultant, Thomas Anders- Anderson, right? Company, right.
Aye.
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 And I.
Move to open, open up the, uh, Appointment for the Pension Investment Advisor.
Nominate Steve Z, Michael Glacken.
Second.
We have them written down here, George Glacken and who?
It's, uh, I N R Investments, what they're called actually.
Yeah, Steve is I N R, uh, and Michael Glacken is the-
I N R Investments, it'd be easier that way. Okay, move to make the Appointment of the Pension Investment Advisor, I N R Investments, Glacken and the other gentleman, bring it off, I don't have his name here. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. Move for the Appointment of the Insurance Brokers. When you're saying brokers, meaning health and-
Nominate, uh, Gibbons Insurance Agency and Kennedy?
AJ Gallagher.
And AJ Gallagher.
I second.
Any other nominees? Move to make the Appointments of the Insurance Broker is Gibbons Insurance Company and AJ Gallagher. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. We need a member of the Board to accept the Tax Collector's Appointment of the Deputy Tax Collector, subject to the approval of the Surority Company. And who is the Lauren Hughes?
Nominate Lauren Hughes.
A second.
Any other nominees? Move to accept the Tax Collector's Appointment of the Deputy Tax Collector, subject to approval of Surority Company, Lauren Hughes. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. Okay, we will have remarks from the Commissioners again if we would like. But before we do that, I'll just, I'll jump, the easiest part, I'll jump over that one real quick, that, uh... All the appointments of the Chairpersons and the Members are staying the same, nobody's moving anywhere unless anybody wants to ask for something different or want to help out somewhere else in the committees, but, uh, as of this time, the Board Members serve where they served, uh, in 2021, and I thank you all for doing that. I think it's working out that way. Other than that, we'll do the remarks for the Commissioners, I'll start out with the Vice Chair, Chairman or Chairwoman, Nicole Whitaker. Do you have any comments?
Uh, no, I don't have any comments, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Joe Neary?
No, I'm fine, thank you.
Commissioner Mike Gorioso?
No, I made my comments earlier, but just again, I'm looking forward to working with everybody in 2022.
Commissioner Joe Baako?
No, I'm good.
Okay, um, I've said enough tonight, uh, need, need a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a good night, we'll start up in a few minutes. Okay. Meeting come to order. We have a pledge of allegiance.
Under God, it is but liberty and justice for all.
Thank everybody for coming out tonight. Uh, the upper judges attach a report of the commissioners caucus meeting, January third, twenty-two. It's eight P M. We'll open it up with the citizens' comments. We'll go to the phone lines first. Make that quick tonight since we are virtual.
Let's take a roll call.
Oh, my fault. George, can you take the roll call, please?
Commissioner Godioso?
Here.
Commissioner Rakowski?
Here.
Commissioner Neary?
Here.
Commissioner Whitaker?
Here.
Commissioner Baacko?
Here.
Michael Pierce?
Here.
Lisa Catanha?
Here.
Myself, George Needles, present.
Thank you. Now we'll go to citizens' comments. We'll go on the phone. Essentially, they're virtual. Just please state your full name and address, uh, so that you have it for the public record. Telephone number is five seven one, seven four eight, four zero two one, and enter in the passcode six zero four, oh, six nine, nine three two pound. Again, the phone number is five seven one, seven four eight, four zero two one. The passcode is six zero four, oh, six nine, nine three two pound, and you could dial now and we'll take calls. We're bored up for at least three minutes for anybody calling in. Make note there is no call-ins, uh, citizens' comments on the floor tonight. I'll go to my right. Uh, the left one to the floor, is there any comments to the right? Any citizens' comments to the left side of my side and right side of the room? Make note there is no citizens' comments. We'll, we'll start with our professionals' report tonight. We'll start with our township engineer, Lisa Catanha.
Thank you, Mr. President. You do have a copy of my report. The first thing on the agenda, we completed, as was authorized last month, the final municipality, uh, planning code inspection for the Wawa project. The board will need to consider at the regular meeting to accept that punch list forward to the developer, uh, within fifteen days of the authorization. I have sent the inspection report to the developers, uh, both developers of the Wawa property, their project, both Provco Pineville as well as Wawa, and, uh, that was done, uh, per the MPC with, uh, certified mail. The AutoZone final inspection was also completed, as was authorized last month, and again, the board will need to accept that final inspection and proceed, uh, authorize the, uh, acceptance and the inspection report be sent to the developer per the MPC. Uh, we had a hearing for the 2022 community development block grant application last month. Uh, as you are aware, the board has the ability to do a priority project and an alternate project. I believe that there, that those have been selected. Uh, we will need to do a resolution this evening. Resolution, uh, or excuse me, the applications are due by four thirty on January the seventh. So it's imperative that we get that information. We can move forward with the, uh, applications. The 2022 Greenlight Go application, I have about forty percent of it complete. I'm waiting for, uh, cost estimates from our vendors, as well as, uh, Al Federico and I've been working on the other improvements that don't concern the actual traffic signal itself. Uh, so we should have that ready for submission next week. I'm going to ask that the board give me authorization to do a contract. It will be considered a maintenance contract for the thermoplastic, uh, pavement markings throughout the township. Uh, that thermoplastic will be done in lieu of regular line painting. Uh, the, based on conversations at the Public Works meeting, we feel that this is going to save time and manpower with the, uh, with the Public Works Department. As far as stormwater projects, I am not aware that we've received all of the easements as of yet for the, for the, um, Peach Cherry Plum Street Stormwater Project. I believe there's one or two that, that we have not received as of yet. If I can provide any help in getting those completed, I certainly will do so. Uh, we have a request, uh, for a priority to get the Taras Circle basin repairs completed. The outfall structure is in poor shape and needs to be, uh, replaced. So I'm going to ask for that authorization, uh, for, for that work. In other, there's several things on my, in my report, but one thing that, um, is outstanding for a few months, um, based on a request from Del Cora, I think everyone is aware that Del Cora is in process of trying to reduce the cost to the clients, the municipal, and ultimately the residents of the, of the county in, um, sanitary sewer wastewater, uh, improvements. Right now, uh, any of the surchargers are going to the city of Philadelphia from the east side of Delaware County. Because Del Cora also services the west side of Delaware County, Del Cora is required in making any changes that they update their five thirty-seven plan. Uh, that plan has been submitted to all the municipalities. It was submitted to your planning commission who agreed that the four alternatives, uh, of the four alternatives, the selected alternative would be the, the correct alternative to pursue. Um, just so everyone is on the same page, really, there's the four alternatives. Um, the first was to build a pipeline to, down to the Western Treatment Plant, which is in the city of Chester. However, they need to find land to expand that plant. Um, the second would be to do a. The second would be to do a tunnel. The tunnel is going to be between 80 and 100 feet below grade, so it will be in solid bedrock. It will be used for both storage and conveyance, so they'd be able to store sewage from the east side and take it down to the plant, discharge it as, as the plant capacity is available. And, and they'd have a few things that they would need to do with various pump stations. But that is the alternative that they selected. The third alternative would have been to build a new plant somewhere in the east side of Delaware County. And as you know, the NIMBY syndrome, not in my backyard. It was not well-received with the general public, and it would, would be much more expensive than what, what they're proposing. And of course, the fourth one is no action, and they've calculated there would be about a $600 million bill to, that would, they would need to pay to the city of Philadelphia for sewage treatment. So they are asking that each municipality approve, or adopt a resolution approving the 537 plan. And that, that resolution would then be submitted to DEP, who is currently doing a review of the 537. Otherwise, I can report general progress and answer any questions you may have.
Anybody on the board have any questions?
One quick one.
I do.
Somerset bids go out yet?
What was that, Joe?
Did the bid for the Somerset project go out yet?
I'm not. Somerset.
Did the bids for Somerset?
No, they did, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Commissioner. The bids did not go out as of yet, we're trying to set up a meeting with Mr. Pierce and Somerset's engineer and, and attorney, so everyone's on the same page. So they're going to give us the specifications, all the technical specifications, and we've got to utilize their plans. So we're, we're still working on that.
Okay.
Do we have a copy of the contract for thermoplastics?
We don't at this point have a contract, I do have specifications.
Okay.
Though there is no contract as of yet. We would do a typical maintenance con, well, I wouldn't do it, the solicitor would do a typical maintenance contract, like we have with Lenai Electric and, and some other companies that we utilize throughout the year.
Would their costs be covered by liquid fuels?
It would, yes.
Okay, thank you.
One of my questions.
Pavement markings are eligible under liquid fuels funding.
Any other questions?
I'm fine.
Okay, thank you for the report. You answered my question, I was going to ask you the same question regarding the liquid fuel technical, you got the answer. But the 537 plan, do they have land for that to, what, what do they want to do now, this project that they're building on? Do they have land, or they still have to?
So, any of the, any of, they currently are working on all of the easements for the tunnel. Any of the real improvements are going to be on areas where they currently have pump station, Darby Joint Creek Authority property, they're in process of buying a portion of that up in, in Darby Township. They'll be doing work at the central pump station, they'll be doing work at the,
Muck and a Payton's?
Muck and, the Muck and a Payton's, they're, they'll be doing work down at the plan itself. So they're not looking at, other than, than actual land easements for something that's going to be 80 feet to 100 feet in the ground. It'll be 80 feet up in the, in the Darby Creek Joint Authority area, and about 100 down by the plant. So it'll be this main tunnel, and then service tunnels that get to the main tunnel. It's a very innovative process, and quite frankly, the engineering society is going to be hearing about the details of the project, so I'll send a notice out, and you're certainly welcome to join our group to hear what Gary Snyder and the group from AECOM come up with.
Is this the first in this area?
I believe so. It's going to be very innovative, for sure.
Thank you very much. And we'll go on to the solicitor, Michael Pierce.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Couple of items, we have the tax mileage ordinance, which will be an action item later, as well as the trash fee ordinances, they've been advertised in accordance with the First Class Township Code requirements, which require your passage to the tax bills and everything, they'll add on time. Township manager asked me about establishing a telecommunications policy for conducting meetings virtually. There, there is authorization currently to do that, but I think we want to clean that up a little bit. Make sure that we have all of our potential things covered in the event that we have to go virtual, such as illnesses and that type of thing, just so that everybody's clear. And the general, the general ground rules are that it needs to be, you need to be able to hear everything, people need to be able to hear you, and there needs to be able to be interaction. I'll work on that policy. We've had resolution of a number of the tax deals that were filed by the school district, excuse me, they are all in good shape, they're going to result in some cost increase. Tax assessments. All other matters are pretty much.
Thank you, is there any questions for the solicitor?
I'm fine for, I'm, I'm fine at this moment.
We'll move on to the manager's report, Manager George Needle.
Evening, everybody, the first item I have is an escrow release for consideration next week's meeting. It's just a grading escrow that has been approved and is ready to be released. The second item I have a resolution for you tonight, a couple of months back, we spoke about the possibility of applying for a female hazard mitigation program grant for 2409 West Colonial. It's a purchase of a residential, purchase and demolition of a residential property that has been prone to flooding over the past 30 years. The property is in the flood plain. I've been working on that application, based off of the requirements, the township would not incur any costs outside of a $400 appraisal fee for this, and our time for the application. That application is due on the 7th as well, so I've been getting all the information together for that. But I've asked the board later for the resolution on that. We've received a reverse subdivision application for the fire companies in the name of Boothland Fire Company, the owner of the property. And with that, we did not receive any payment, we, they're seeking a fee waiver. I think, believe due to their nonprofit status and their funding mechanism, that this is a, a warranted waiver. It's essentially, you know, since the township funds the fire company, we would be in fact paying ourselves back, so. The next item I have, I'm going to ask for next week as a motion as well, so we are, we are finalizing all the numbers, financial numbers for the year, but it appears through some one-time revenues and some cost-saving initiatives that have been implemented over the course of the year, we're going to end with a rather substantial surplus. So, you know, one of the things that we do is we, we constantly look at the best way to utilize the fund balances that we have to either earn money or for additional cost savings. So I'm going to ask the board for approval to pay off all non-electoral debt outside of the, the most recent bond that the township has. The total that we will need to pay outside of the bound, outside of the budgeted principal amount is $904,000. And the surplus is looking to be close to a million dollars. So this is, this is more than, we, we more than have enough money from what came in this year to cover that. And basically, what that's going to do is if that $900,000 was to sit into the bank over the course of the two years, which is where we effectively would see this debt, most of this debt, we'd probably earn about $600 to $1,200, but in doing this, we save about $61,000 in interest payments. So I think this is a very smart move for us to make.
We have an executive session on that, so we got the numbers in front of us, so is it fine?
Yeah, I did the, I gave you the loan breakdown, you'll have the, the financials before the next meeting as well. Economic Development Incentive Update, Stephen Barf will be giving a presentation, I believe it'll end up being virtual at our next meeting. He had sent a draft copy of that to me today, that I will get out to the board. Boothland Town Center, Commissioner Rakowski and myself met with representatives from PennDOT and from the, the Planning Consulting Group, CH Planning, in regards to the Blue Ball Avenue discussion. So I, I guess, Ed, I was thinking, I thought we ended that meeting as looking for clarification of what direction to go from the board. So it appeared from that meeting that it would not be possible to, to close off Blue Ball. However, the draft plan that was presented to us still includes that as a, effectively the core component of the entire plan when it comes to that town center area. So I don't know if that's something we want to go back and have discussion with the planner prior to it coming for that final presentation, as to how that's worded, or, or do we omit some of that sections, or what?
We, well, we have a meeting next Monday, the 10th, the task force itself, I don't know how to report it later then. And that is to go over the preliminary that the plan had put together. So if that's one of the concerns even on our end, try to iron everything out, any other concerns in there, so she can have the final plan to us and to the planning board and everything by February. So, yeah, I'll make note of that, make sure we address that Monday night with a task force. And if you have any, we're going to be meeting, Georgia, with the K-School, seems to be the hot spot for us to meet. And maybe virtual too, because of all the stuff, but if that's a major concern, just put some down and we'll make sure we iron it out that night.
And then the next, was the February special meeting, so I believe we had talked about the date being, is it the first Monday or the second Monday of the month? With Boothland Town Center meeting for the board?
Um, I thought it was the,
The 14th, correct?
Well, not the 14th, it's going to be the 7th or the 21st.
We need to nail that down so we can advertise that meeting.
The 14th was Valentine's Day, I didn't want to.
I have it on mine, it's on the 7th.
That's for a motion at the next meeting to offer out the 7th, to advertise that meeting.
Okay.
And then the next one is, at this time of year, we get quite a few right-to-know requests for the delinquent real estate tax list, it's turned over to the county. So some of these come from investors. Some of these go from these government watchdog websites and companies that are, you know, fishing for, for information on appointed and elected officials and stuff. So it's roughly about 10 to 12 of these requests that we get annually. So what we've been doing with a lot of the items that we get a lot of requests for is we've been publishing them on ECO360, our, our kind of like our documentation repository. And then when we get the requests, we tell them this is a public document made publicly accessible on our website, and it slows down the amount of requests that we get to the township, because the repeat requesters know where to get this information. This information is all public information, however, I also know that it's sensitive information, because it includes names and, and addresses, so I think it really should be, prior to us actually doing this, I think this should be a discussion of whether or not the board wants to make that information readily accessible to the public or accessible through the right-to-know process. And the next item that I have is the Meeting House Apartment Complex. So as you know, Meeting House Apartment was in front of the board a couple of months ago asking for a waiver from the subdivision land development requirement for some modest improvements to the property. Since then, we have received various different applications for permits for other improvements to the property, as well as we received a complaint that there was work going on, that was followed up on, that they had not received their permits for. They hadn't applied for permits for it. So the contractor that was doing the work has reached out to the township, asking for the board to waive the double permit fee charge that we, that gets charged when a contractor is found doing work without permits. So if the board would like to consider that, I can have that on the agenda for next month.
Hold on, so I got to talk on that.
Go ahead, Joe.
We, we cut him a break on the first thing, then they went and did more work without applying for permits, and now they don't want us to charge them double. Am I correct?
Correct.
Okay.
They're, they're replacing many decks throughout the whole complex. What they came in front of us was the addition that they wanted to add on.
Right.
But after the fact, that, that was already taken care of, we, we gave them the waiver for that. But they started tearing down all these decks and rebuilding them without any permit, and.
And we called them.
We called them, right. So, how many, what are you looking at, George?
I do not have the calculated number, so typically, we haven't waived this in the past, but I can get the board a number for prior to next, the next meeting.
So I have a question, um, George, you said the special meeting, I don't know if you all heard me, we had scheduled the special meeting for February 7th at 5 o'clock, and we allowed, we, we said we wanted it early, because they had to wrap up by the end of the month, and we wanted to allow time for additional meetings between that time and the end of the month. Is that what everybody has?
I never heard of confirmation date, but yes, you're, you're confirmed, you're right on that with an early date, so we could get it to the planning board before it gets to our adoption in March. They have time to look at it. If I'm not mistaken, I think the plan should be at the, this plan should be at the planning board in January. So the planning board should have their comments for us in February, when we have the presentation. Then we vote on it in March, that's the goal.
Okay, so we just need to finalize the date then.
The only thing I'll say about that planning commission meeting is you do have a couple of large developments on that agenda. So, I mean, it might not, it might be a reasonable, I would anticipate that they're probably not going to finish that meeting in one night. We can obviously put it first on the agenda, but we can try to get it through.
Actually, after our meeting on the 10th Monday, we need to get what the task force wants to kind of tie up over to them, like sooner than later, to give them time to look at it before they actually meet. So it doesn't take that much time, basically.
Yeah, well, I would assume you're going to have a presentation by the, by CH Planning at that planning commission meeting?
Honestly, I don't know if she's planning on that one, or just to the board of commissioners.
I'll follow, because last conversation I had with her, she was going to be in attendance, give the presentation to the planning commissioner, and give the presentation to her.
Right.
Any other questions for the township manager? Georgia, are we using our timestamp machine yet, that we got in?
Uh, yeah, we,
Everything coming in? Okay. No other questions for the township manager, we'll move on to our commissioners, and we'll start with the vice chairwoman, Nicole Whitaker.
Good evening, everyone, I don't have anything to report on this week. Reports at our regular meeting on our, where we stand with the heart and soul, we are wrapping that up as well. As well as any updates from our recreation department, I know that we were doing some renovations at the community center on 452, so I'll get a status update on that and provide that information to the board. That's all I have, thank you.
Anything to be brought to attention to Commissioner Whitaker? We'll move to Commissioner John Neary. I'm just going this way around, I'm going to change it up then, next time. Joe going from left, right to left, we'll let George know that.
Reports will be available next week in the office for both the police and,
for both the police and the administration reports for the financials. Look at the information that George has given us about the principal amounts that are due and the extra payments that are due. Page, second or third page in his section. And that's all I have.
Anything to be brought to the attention of Mr. Mary? Move to Commissioner Michael Guardiosso.
Thank you. Just to jump back to the timestamp. I just want to make the board aware that even though we get something and we timestamp it, I'm assuming this is for like planning submissions that you were referring to. The official time clock doesn't start until the first meeting, whether it be the caucus meeting, a commissioners meeting, or a planning board meeting. So even though we've time stamped it, the official clock that 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 ninety day period doesn't 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 start until we officially meet as a board. So I just I just I just want to I just want to clarify that. We have a couple of applications. Forty four sixty four Conchester Highway Land Development. Believe that's going to be ready to present in the Board of Commissioners of next month, February 2022. That's the Gofarm, correct? I'm sorry, Duncan.
That's about the.
Nine hundred Township Line Road Land Development. That's expected to go before the planning board in February. And for this month, we have 4800 Conchester Avenue. And that applicant is planning to attend the January twenty twenty seventh planning commissioning meeting. My rest of the items are on there. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Any other questions for the Mike Guardiosso, Commissioner Guardiosso? Anything about the time machine? I just want to because not you're absolutely correct about the plan and then the ninety day and all that stuff. But anything we that I know I do it at the airport for the last thirty. Anything I put in an administration, they time it, stamp it, I get it back. I'm looking more or less at, hey, somebody hand something to us, it's time stamped. It's documented that we got it that day. We have little concerns with the permits. If they're fifteen days for residential, thirty for commercial, whatever, that once a resident or somebody knows that permit is stamped, they know that they have it from there. But the other ones, you're right about coming to us.
Okay.
I just want to keep everything blowing the way it should.
And if I could just one more thing. Fourteen oh five Meeting House Road Reverse Subdivision. I believe they're asking for consideration for a fee waiver.
And I think when that when that note for the firehouse itself about the fee waiver is they still would have to document that in the Delaware County Planning. I mean, make sure it's.
Go through the.
Order.
Right.
So it would just be for the funds. It would just be for the application.
So the application would solve the fee waiver would solely be for the township fees.
Right.
And it would have to go through the Delaware County Planning Department and through their processes as well.
Then be reported that definitely has to be reported.
It absolutely would have to be recorded, yes.
Thank you.
That's all that I have. If anybody has any questions for me, I'll be happy to answer them.
Now move over to the third board commissioner, Joe Biato.
Thank you. Nothing much to report this week with the holidays and all. I told the public work and the sewer authority, they could give me their reports next week. Unless anybody has any questions for me, I'll have my reports next.
The sewer bills came out. I got mine today.
I told you they're going up.
Yeah, they did.
What's the discount rate exactly?
What's that?
Do you know what the do you know what the exact discount rate is?
It's it's right on the bill. If you pay by a certain date, it's one thing. You pay a month later, it's I don't know the exact amount.
Okay.
But it's it's right.
And now we'll do we'll do my report for the fire and all that, all the reports that are being for next week. We do have the emergency management report in the folder tonight. As George stated, the Boothland Town Center's. We have our last task force meeting this Monday night, the tenth. Hopefully, we get everything tied up with the Blue Ball Avenue and the report, and they would have this open house. And it looks like it may be February seventh. Everybody's reception is good with that date. We'll try to line it for February seventh for the the presentation to the board of commissioners. But well, George and I will reach out to Nancy to make sure everything's going to flow that. Do the seventh, we'll have to push it to the twenty first. Other than that, is there anything to be brought to my attention for the my committees? Now, we got some under new business, some action items to be taken tonight before we adjourn. Number one would be member of the board would consider a resolution designating the TD Bank as a township depository.
So moved second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Right.
Close, so order. Member of the board consider a resolution announcing the regular board of commissioners meet in place, day and time.
So moved second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
So order. Member of the board consider a resolution appointing a chief administrative officer of the police and non-uniform pension plans.
So moved second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close, so order. Member of the board consider a resolution setting the non-contractual 2022 wages.
Moved.
So second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So order. Member of the board consider a resolution designate the authorized signatories of the township bank transactions.
Moved second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Close, so order. Member of the board consider a resolution authorizing an application to be prepared and submitted to the Delaware County for the FY twenty fiscal year 2022 Community Development Block Grant Program.
So moved second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Close, so order. Member of the board consider a resolution committing.
Sorry, you can strike seven from you.
Strike second. Strike at number seven.
Okay.
Number eight, member of the board consider a resolution making application to the FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant Program for the purchase and demolition of the home at 2409 West Colonial Drive.
So moved second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Close, so order. Member of the board consider an ordinance setting the Upper Conchester Township 2022 real estate tax rate.
So moved second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
So order. The last one's a member of the board considering the ordinance setting the Upper Conchester Township 2022 track trash collecting fee.
So moved second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Close, so order. We'll do it tonight. Anybody have any questions?
Just like to say congratulations to Nicole, Joe, and Dan. Welcome back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Need a motion to adjourn?
So moved second.
All in favor?
Aye.